We will begin our committee of the whole with Veteran Service Officer Justin, take it away.
Absolutely. All right. I didn't get this slide in there that you all should have a sheet of paper in front of you with, well, it looks like a very complicated grid. One of the things I was tasked with when I started was to start doing some outreach and attending Veteran Service Organization meetings in the evenings. What you see before you is the next two years of scheduling on the what meetings I'm going to attend. So we've got a three-month rotation. On the first month, you see here in October on the top row, everything in gray is what I plan to attend. So last night I attended the VFW in Lake City, their meeting there. And then this upcoming second Monday is Columbus Day, so they won't be having a meeting and won't be able to make it to that. And then you have the third Monday, American Legion in Lake City. I've got to get ahold of them and I'm going to attend their meeting. And then we've got the VFW in the Cannon Falls will be attending their meeting here on the fourth Tuesday. Next month, I'll shift to the second Tuesdays or excuse me, the Tuesdays of the month. And then after that, it'll be the kind of the oddball days, the Wednesdays and Thursdays, and then we'll reset that rotation. Then in the bottom right-hand corner of that grid, we've started doing some remote office hours. We've aligned those to be in the same time or same day of the month as those meetings, just to make it a little bit easier to attend those meetings. So we'll go and conduct remote office hours. The difference is, is the remote office hours are every month. So every first Monday, I will be at the VFW in Lake City. Every second Monday, I'll be at the American Legion in Pine Island, unlike the meetings which I'll be making about once every four months. So any questions on that? It can be a little confusing.
No, that's excellent.
All right. Moving on to the presentation.
Okay.
All right. So last year, there was no tracking really of any of these Veteran Services that were being provided to the county. One of the metrics that we had was how many phone calls came into and out of the office. We had 7,600 phone calls based on the IT report that I got at the end of the year. We started using VetPro about August of the year, and that's where I got that 540 in-person meetings. So those numbers aren't the best. So since August, we've been tracking everything with VetPro. As of June of this, from January to June of this year, we had 3,600 phone calls, 636 emails, 516 in-person meetings, 327 faxes. I'll get to that in a moment. Sent out 160 letters and we have unspecified on that tracking that I'll get into in a minute as well. For total of 5,400 veteran interactions from January to June. Faxes is how we track submissions. That's claims that we submit to the VA. That's claims that we submit to CHAMPA for spousal benefits. That's grave marker requests, any claim that we file for a veteran and using any Veteran Services, that's how we track that. So we've had 327 submissions. And then unspecified, we're beginning to use that as when we check up on a claim. As you know, or may have heard, a claim can take anywhere from three months to a year and a half. And so we try to make sure we check up on that claim about every, every month to make sure everything's moving forward, that there's no no problems with the claim or anything like that. Try to get ahead of it before it comes back to the veteran is denied, or that there's some other problem going on with the claim. So with the amount of work that we put forward, we have had 67 compensation awards, six DIC awards. We have not begun tracking pension awards or survivor pension awards. 24 compensation denials. Currently, we have 113 compensation claims in process. Compensation claim is for disability. That's a veteran who, you know, broke their ankle in service. Their ankle's never been quite right since service. And so the VA compensates them for that, that impact on their employability. DIC pension is a pension to a spouse for a veteran who died of a service-connected disability. Typically, right now, what you're going to see that is it's going to be Agent Orange-related deaths for veterans. The veteran passed away from a disease from those caused by Agent Orange, and that spouse then gets a pension for the rest of their life, as long as they don't remarry. Pensions and survivor pensions, that's a little bit different. That helps bring veterans and spouses of veterans up to the poverty level. So if they have a, if their income is super low, they're retired, they can't work, that helps bring them up and at least keeps them afloat. That only goes to veterans and spouses of veterans of wartime veterans. So that's not every single veteran or every spouse of a veteran that gets that, that award. That award also varies anywhere from $50 upwards to a cap at that, that poverty level income. Compensation denials, that was the ones that we didn't win. We've got a 74% success rate. Talking with other CBSOs, they don't track their success rates. They don't want anyone to know what their success rates look like. I have no problems. Let's, let's track it and let's see if I can improve on it. I am, I'm a data guy. I like data-driven decisions. With that in mind, I have a breakdown of all the awards in that column. Transcriptions in the way. The one you can't see is zero percent. We had seven zero percent awards. And that's a zero dollar compensation. We had seven 10% awards, one 20%, two 30%, and so on down the line. On the right-hand column is the amount of money that that individual would receive every month for the rest of their life, unless that rating changes. At the bottom, and this is the one that we're really proud of, 21 of our awards were 100% compensation ratings. That's $3,600 a month base. That's if not, not if the veteran has a spouse or children or anything like that. So we're really proud of that. What's cut off there is the DIC pension amount. That's about $1,500 a month for the spouse of that veteran for the rest of their life. And then, of course, the pension and survivor's pension varies. So what does that mean to the Good Hugh County economy? So Scott asked a really good question in my first presentation, fall-ish of last year, where I said that we brought in about $400,000 into the Good Hugh County economy when I started tracking. And he'd asked if I was tracking how much they were previously getting and how much they are currently getting, and they had subtracted that amount for that adjustment. So I made sure to get that done accurately and effectively this time. So what that means is like a veteran might have a heart condition for Agent Orange, and they were only rated at 50%, and it got worse. And so we got them to 100% after that. So there's that difference there. So previously, all those awards that we got, they were previously receiving about $36,000 a month. With all those awards, we got it up to $131,000 a month with a difference of $95,000 a month. Times 12, that's $1.1 million in new money into the economy. And more importantly to our veterans, helping them support themselves, helping them housing, helping them pay for food. So that's what I've got for all of you right now. What do you have for me?
Pretty impressive, Justin. Thank you very much for all of your work.
Thank you.
Yes.
Oh, you know, it, the numbers are just, it's fantastic. But when you say all we're doing is bringing them up to the poverty line, I mean, is that sad? I mean.
Yeah, with, with the pension and the survivor's pension, it's the VA policy on where that, that, they call it a mapper amount, where that number sits. And that's unfortunately not a decision I can make or anything I can influence. That's on the federal level.
Something we have to talk to our other legislators. You know, we appreciate what you're doing, but let's work on it a little bit more.
I can absolutely add that to my legislative priorities.
Yep.
Just a comment. In discussions with you in the past, Justin, you've talked about homeless vets and how much time and how hard it is to find places for them. Any update on, I think for us to get a sense of Good Hugh County, how many you work with, how many are, where they end up?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Not, not specifics, just in general is all I'm looking at.
Right now, we are down to two that we're currently working. And we are very close to getting them housed. What we're learning is it's about a six to eight month commitment. Getting them, finding them, developing that trust, and then working through their boundaries to, to housing. Part of that is is what housing we can find them. There's different types of homelessness, and there's different reasons for that homelessness. And you know what? I'm going to develop another presentation for y'all. How's that?
I think that's excellent. But you know, part of this question goes towards, you know, we are, we've done the housing study and we know about housing, and we know that there is single-family housing to apartments, to subsidized housing, to public housing, to where's a piece that we can maybe address that is about veterans? Is there, is there a piece we need to find that we need to maybe as a county community invest in to so that you can find that housing for them easier? And maybe it is in Good Hugh County, maybe it's not in Dakota County, maybe it's not in Scott County, maybe it's I just, you know, the only way to address that issue is to address that issue. It's not going to go away. It's only going to get more. And, and I'd rather work on it upstream rather than wait till till the federal government says poverty is good enough for a veteran. I mean, that's just absurd. That, and, and who dictates what that poverty line is? Because I'm going to bet it's lower than what you or I would say the poverty line is. I, I would just bet that 100%.
So, good work.
Justin, do they need, do veterans need case management through their housing as well?
Um, we've actually, the different services that I've been going through do provide case management, actually. One, the two programs that we've been using, well, actually, one is a nonprofit MACV, Minnesota Assistance Council for Veterans. They provide case-managed housing. And then the other one is through the MDBA, the Minnesota Department of Veteran Affairs. They have a program called V-TENT, or Veteran Temporary Housing. And that requires someone in the county to be, to be case managing them. Lance from Beyond the Yellow Ribbon is volunteering all his time working with the homeless vets and managing that program. And Beyond the Yellow Ribbon's been footing that bill. So what it is with that V-TENT program is you pay for the housing upfront, and then after two weeks, the V-TENT reimburses you. And it kind of turns into the cycle down the road where you're not spending more than your budget, but you're also getting reimbursed after a timeframe. And they require case management in order for them to be continuing that reimbursement. The thing with, with homeless veterans, and I've learned this in my DVO position, is that I was taught it as a braided support network. So you have a DVO case manager, maybe a county social worker, maybe a MACV caseworker, and everyone's coordinating with each other and everyone's communicating, providing braided support. So that, that individual knows that they have a team helping them. I was also taught as, taught to call it an integrated resource team, an IRT. And I absolutely support that, that kind of teams key resource. So.
Susan, did you have a comment?
No.
Okay. Anything? Jason? Justin, thank you so very much. Good Hugh County Extension Report.
Morning.
Good morning, Men of Chair, Commissioners. My name's Tammy McCullough. I am the Extension Regional Director based out of Farmington, that has the opportunity and the privilege to work with the Good Hugh County Extension Office Team. And it is an honor to be here today to share a little bit about our partnership with Good Hugh County. Thank you. All right. So our local memorandum of agreement, as you know, we're in a three-year memorandum of agreement. And that, that agreement has two FTEs, so the two positions that we have before you today, Ally and Rachel. And then we also have an Extension Office Operation, Extension Administrator, which is Danny Rice, who's downstairs right now. And then in addition to having our local extension team, you know that by having a presence of 4-H youth development programming in, in Good Hugh County, you also have leveraging for additional extension opportunities. And one of those examples that we'll highlight today is the Extension Master Gardener Program. But in addition to that, there are plenty of examples of Extension doing work on tourism, water resources, aquatic invasive species detection, financial education, SNAP education, parenting, the list goes on. And here are just a few highlights of our Farm Family of the Year, which the Extension Committee names, nominates, and names, as well as Tourism Conference was held here for the entrepreneurs, and a press release from the Tourism group from Extension when they did some work and research on the holiday stroll.
And I'll take it from here. Thank you again. My name is Ally Kleckner, and I've been here. I just finished my seventh fair, so that's kind of exciting. What you see here is our program reach over the last eight-ish years. I started these numbers, or tracking these numbers when I came in the fall of 2016. So I took the program numbers from the year before I started and then kept tracking them from that point forward. What you cannot see is, actually, could we go from full screen to just the regular document so we can see the whole thing? Is that a possibility?
We have it here.
You do have the whole thing?
Yeah.
Okay. So our numbers have increased dramatically since you decided to invest in an additional FTE. And we're very pleased to say that we're reaching over 900 youth in Good Hugh County now through both of our, both our traditional programming in the community, as well as our after-school programming and outreach that Rachel does. Our clubs have stayed pretty consistent, and our adult volunteers, you'll see some waiver there. It's because our volunteers are on a three-year cycle. So every three years, they become inactivated and must recomplete a safety of minors and background check. And so at that time, we usually see some falloff from volunteers who maybe have been long-term volunteers and are ready to step back, or they just never re-enroll. So you'll see that that three-year cycle ended in 2020, and so we're starting to build back into that next three-year cycle. A few program highlights from the last year. Our Arts In program continues to be a highlight of the summer. Those youth work a week to put together a show, and then they travel an entire day to each, to the assisted living facilities in Good Hugh County to, to, to perform for our elderly members of the community, and they always get a huge kick out of it. We also held our Farm Safety Day, which included demonstrations by the Zambrota Fire Department about basic use of a fire extinguisher. Our Tractor Safety Certification Program certified another 11 youth this year to be legally able to work for people other than family. And our Shooting Sports Program has seen exponential growth. We had just five or six youth who were participating in conjunction with Olmsted County three years ago, and this year we hosted nearly 30 youth at the Good Hugh County Fairgrounds for archery practice every single week this summer. Additionally, we have a youth, Lily, she's from our Cherry Grove Club, who's been participating in a program called True Leaders in Equity, and she's had the opportunity to go to DC three times this year to work with legislative opportunities out there, conferencing with youth from across the nation on equity issues. And we have invited her to attend our next Extension Committee meeting to present more in-depth on her work. And, and, and we're very, very proud of the fact that she's taken such a visible and national role advocating for youth. County Fair recap. You got the rough numbers at County Fair. However, our total exhibitor count was 532. We had 426 livestock exhibitors and 331 youth participated in building projects, which were up again this year. We are now above pre-pandemic numbers again in our building exhibits. Dog and horse remain very steady with our number of exhibitors. And the livestock numbers you see are number of head in the barns. So that would be individual animals, with the exception of poultry, which is a quote penned number, which means there could be anywhere from two to four birds in a pen. But we track it on a pen count. Oh, that's too bad. The photo that's missing is a really wonderful photo of a youth who crocheted an octopus, and it was wonderful, and it got a purple ribbon at State Fair. But our youth participated in livestock general encampment. We had a youth participate in the State Arts In program. And our Dairy Judging Team, which is in the top right corner, won the statewide contest, was able to attend the World Dairy Expo National 4-H Contest on Sunday and won the whole thing. So that's fresh off the presses. Sunday evening at the awards ceremony, we had Natalie Clemmensen, one of our youth from Zambrota. She placed first individually overall for the 4-H contest. Abby Scheffler took third individually overall. The team did a wonderful job. I have not spoken with their coaches yet. They came home at 2:00 AM yesterday morning, so I figured I should give them some time to get some sleep, and I will be connecting with them this week. My assumption would be that they are planning to take the opportunity to travel to Europe. That is the, the, the award for winning the National 4-H Contest. So we're very proud of their commitment in the last couple of years. State Dog, Horse, and Shoot also just wrapped up. We had several youth who placed very well at all of it. We had, I believe, 17 youth, 15 youth go to state shoot, or no, we had 28 youth go to state shoot. We had 17 youth go to state dog, and we had five individuals who qualified to go to the state horse show. Unfortunately, one of their horses came up lame the week before, so we did only send four youth, but we are very proud of everybody's accomplishments. I'm going to brag on myself. Every individual in our job classification is required to go through an academic promotion process at least once in their tenure. I submitted my promotion dossier in November of last year, and after a very long wait, it was accepted in May of 2023. And so I was promoted in the areas of program leadership, extension, teaching, and engagement. And so I was promoted from an Assistant Extension Educator to Associate Extension Educator. And now I don't have to do that again if I don't want to. However, there is the opportunity to promote one more time within my job classification if I so choose. Part of my promotion work was grant work through about youth mental wellbeing. As many of you know, there is a mental health crisis in our youth. It was gravely exposed by the COVID-19 pandemic, and everybody kind of reeled from it afterwards. Minnesota Department of Ag received funding from the USDA for an initiative called Bend Don't Break, which was meant to work with providing mental health resources and training to rural communities specifically. Extension was very uniquely positioned, and there was two programs statewide to work with mental health resources for rural communities during this grant period that lasted two years. There was a program statewide on ambiguous loss that was run out of one of our Extension educators from Rochester, and a program that I headed up with my colleague from Swift County, working with youth and volunteers to promote mental health resources in our rural communities, knowing that there's a provider shortage. So our programmatic response over the last two years, we worked hard to equip 4-H volunteers, staff, and youth with resources to actively work with youth who may be having a mental health crisis. We developed in conjunction with our Good Hugh County Health and Human Services Team a Mental Health Crisis Resource Guide that was distributed statewide. And we've found ways to work with our volunteers so that they're better equipped to work with youth who may be in crisis. For example, how to do a referral when it gets past your own point of expertise. As you can see, we reached statewide. In two years, these programs started in just Good Hugh and Swift Counties in 2021. And by September of this year, you can see on the map how many counties and, and places we were able to reach through online volunteer trainings, youth leadership retreats, and working at our state leadership conferences, and staff training as well. A little bit of our outcomes, we saw absolutely astronomical knowledge change in those who participated in the volunteer trainings. Our participants came back with very good feedback about why 4-H should be talking about our mental health and resources. And we're very, very proud that we have seen an increased awareness and reduced stigma about mental health and wellbeing in our rural communities. Both Good Hugh and Swift Counties, both of us are now involved with our mental health coalitions and have been working forward with those. And hot off the press the last week, our grant funding with Bend Don't Break did end. However, our work was commendable, and they rolled our existing work into a continuing grant through the Farm and Ranch Stress Assistance Network. And so there will be another year of funding for us to continue the work on rural youth and mental health resources statewide.
It's my turn to take over. So I was brought in, or I got this job in, sorry, this job in January of 2022, and that's when I started the work with the program outreach and after-school efforts. So in 2021, 2022, we started two partnership agreements, which we essentially as a contract, we work with the, or the person that we're working with, where they sign and we provide them with whatever it is that they need, that they're asking of us. So in 2021, 22, we worked with Good Hugh Wildcat Care, which is the Good Hugh School District's after-school program, as well as Cannon Falls County Kids. And then in 2022, 23, we worked with Good Hugh Wildcat Care, Pine Island Panther Pals, Hispanic Outreach, Cannon and Cannon Falls Cannon Kids. As well as we also have opportunities through, in our program with Glorba Connections and our county summer day camps. So looking at numbers a little bit, 21, 22, Good Hugh Wildcat Care, we had 55 youth that were enrolled via our program agreement. So those are youth that I worked with directly on a monthly basis, where I provided them with semi, usually a STEM activity, some sort of activity to get them interested in 4-H and get them just to know what it is about 4-H. Of those youth that I worked with, 41 of those youth are not previously enrolled in 4-H. Some that I do work with are already enrolled when I work with them. But at that point, only 41 youth, there's only about 14 youth that were already enrolled in our program. So there was 41 youth that we are reaching that we had not previously reached before. In Cannon Falls, we had 113 youth enrolled via our program agreement, and 108 of those youth were not previously enrolled in 4-H. After that summer with them, two of those youth joined our community clubs. So those are already existing clubs. I believe they joined the Asland Evereadies. So they came into our full program after my time working with them, as well as the time that they had spent with the, our 4-H programs that we have offerings for them. And then in 2022, 23, we expanded to four different partnerships. We continued our partnership with Good Hugh Wildcat Care. We adapted our program agreement to not be working with their kindergartners, just because it came to be a little bit too much for both myself and the director at the time. So we went from, we did 36 youth that were enrolled via the program agreement, and 30 of those youth were not previously enrolled. Two joined community clubs throughout the year that I was working with them. So those were youth that came into the program without me having to prompt them. They saw what we were doing and like, they liked what we were doing with them at the after-school programs and decided to join all of on their own. I do give them the resources that if they want to join, they can join. It's easy for them. And then we also did a, we worked with Cannon Falls again this past summer. We had 106 youth enrolled via program agreements, and 100 youth were not previously enrolled in our program. Pine Island Panther Pals was a new one for us. We had, I worked with 125 youth on a monthly basis, and those were enrolled, obviously. And then 120 of those youth were not previously enrolled. As far as we know, like Pine Island is on the border of Olmsted and Dodge, so there were some grass over there. One youth joined one of the community clubs in the region, so we had one, we've had a pretty good success with that. And then the summer, we had Hispanic Outreach reach out to us, and with them, I went in twice this past summer to work with them, and we only continued our efforts with them. They have reached out to want to continue to do high school and middle school stuff. So we had 31 youth that I worked with, and they were enrolled via the program agreement. All 31 of those youth had not, had no prior 4-H experience. They had no idea what was, what 4-H was when I went into it. And so we have that impact on them as well. So these are all youth that we are reaching, that we have not previously reached. I know the numbers say like, we only had two or three or whatever for each one, but join a community club, I'm not looking at the quantity of it. I'm looking at the quality of it, because these are youth that we have previously not reached. With these efforts, I also send out a monthly newsletter to the parents of the youth that I am working with, so they have an idea of who I am, what it is that I'm doing, because if I'm going in the after-school, they have no idea that I'm honestly there.
The, the whole goal of that is not just to get people in 4-H, get youth in 4-H. It's to reach youth with important programming.
Yeah, and that's what we've been doing. We've combined, well, I believe it's 298 youth that I've reached in the last two, year and a half that I've been here. With the new, with the new 4-H year, we are re-upping at least one of the program agreements with Pine Island, as well as Hispanic Outreach would like to continue to do work with us throughout the school year. So. For day camps, we have hosted, this past summer, we hosted seven day camps and 72. For day camps, we've hosted, this past summer, we hosted seven day camps and seventy-two youth attended. Eight of those seventy-two youth were new to our 4H program, so they did not like come to these day camps from a club meeting or anything like that. They came from our promotion that we did outside of our internal circle. And the Glorba Connections is one where we tend to miss. We don't get a lot of out external youth coming to these. So it was a lot of, it was sixteen youth that we had come to all of them, and there was no youth that came from anywhere anywhere other than 4H. There was one youth that came from one of my program agreements, but he has already been in 4H for the last two years. So. These are just some pictures of, like I said, whenever I do after-school programming, it's typically, I go in once a month and provide an activity for them. Typically STEM-related, this last month, we did a lesson plan about density. In the first picture, you can see they're working with plastic gloves. They did a greenhouse in a glove that they all loved, because in the next month, they came back. And they were all telling me about how their seeds had blossomed and grown. And then in this picture next to it, they are making cup rockets, so they're learning about the tension that you need in order to make a cup fly with a rubber band. And then November of last year, we did pop-up thank you cards that they could either give to, they gave back, either gave back to me to give to the veterans, or they took home to give to somebody in their life. That one was a big hit for them because they got to make a make a pop-up card.
How are we on time?
Over. Quick summary.
Okay. Well, you have the slides, so you can you can go ahead and preview some of these other programs that we offer in Good Hugh County, in particular, the Master Gardener Volunteer Program. These are the priorities of that program. And so the volunteers that participate in the Extension Master Gardener Volunteer Program go through a very intense core course to get trained and then do the work in the community. Here is the summary of the last year, so thirty-six active volunteers and six interns, so six people going through the core course and having to do service in the community. Total of one thousand seven hundred and seventy-five volunteer hours in 2022, and then year-to-date, seven hundred and sixty-nine. And then three prospective interns for this coming year and really exciting community partnerships with Prairie Island Habitat and the Red Wing Public Library. And I know that this group would be interested in other project considerations. So if there are things that you see in the community, please let us know. And I would echo that would be the same with the 4H Development Program. If you see things in the community where you see a natural partnership, we are interested in investigating those things. And some great images and family health and well-being. This is the SNAP Education Program, so the University of Minnesota Extension delivers the education related to individuals on benefits or assistance, formerly food stamps. We have a representative attending the Good Hugh County Food Access Network. And then also, we talked about Hispanic Outreach. We also have an Extension colleague that sits on the board for Hispanic Outreach as the secretary. And we just hired a new SNAP educator that's going to be working in the region, who will be engaged at that same level. She's just going through her onboarding right now. So I will leave it at that and just say thank you for your partnership. Here's our Extension Committee. Thank you to the two commissioners that serve on that committee, Commissioner Anderson and Commissioner Aggressive. We look forward to having future opportunities to share our work with you.
Well, very impressive reporting. Congratulations on your promotion. That, yes, a lot of work to get that. Yes.
Just a comment, and you didn't mention it's 4H Week.
It's National 4H Week.
And it is so appropriate that you're here doing National 4H for week. The Dairy Judging Team. That is not easy.
No.
I don't think, you know, if you have not done that kind of judging, and I did it way back when in FFA. It is intense to come up with reasons and to come up with, that is, that is an amazing feat. That that's kudos to those and to your department for what you've done to expand and reach youth outside of the 4H program. And I think that's really important for us to remember. It's not all about 4H, it's about youth. And we're reaching beyond that. Master Gardener Program, we hear about it at every extension meeting. They do amazing work. Getting involved with Prairie Island, getting involved with Habitat for Humanity, getting involved with the the Red Wing Library. And there are other areas where they could expand to. We just need to help find them and expand them. So excellent work. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Just thank you.
All right. Thank you so very much for all the work that you do. All right, does anybody need a short break? All right, then. Good morning. I'm going to call to order the